I just appreciate the comments made for everyone, from everyone. And I want to thank all of you for being so respectful. You've been respectful, we've been respectful. So hopefully we will continue to do so. I do want to also add that I did get a legal opinion. We have counsel here on the conflict of interest question that Mr. Garden had. And the lawyer confirmed there is not a conflict. Just so that you know that. All right, I've written some of my thoughts down, so I am going to read it and let you know what I have to say. Although we have met with parents regarding these reassignments and read all letters and documents, I understand that many do not feel that they were given the access that they wanted. Unfortunately, due to laws that protect confidentiality, we were unable to do so. Dozens of parents and teachers who support the decision of the superintendent have also called to write in letters. You will not hear from them tonight because they are afraid of retaliation, both for themselves, their jobs, and their children. We've had people call from mission that said that their children don't want to go to school because if they don't wear green, then they're in trouble with their peers or being bullied by the other kids. So whether that's true or not, I don't know. I'm just telling you this is the kind of comments that he made to us. The majority of the board selected Dr. Lusa for the position of superintendent over six months ago. He has proven to be competent, honest, and hardworking. He has successfully moved our district toward the goals that the board has adopted. Since that time, many changes have been made, but he has proven that he is unafraid to make tough decisions. Certainly doesn't take them lightly. These personnel changes are his responsibility in order to complete the best leadership team. With change comes opportunity. We have tremendous challenges with Common Core, Local Control Accountability Plan, and a dire need for primary reading intervention, just to name a few. Whether we're principals, vice principals, program managers, or teachers, the responsibility is the same, to focus on the academic success of our children and to give them all the resources needed for both our students and teachers. And together, we can move our district to excellence and prepare our children for an increasingly competitive job market. Principals work at will and know that the superintendent has the authority to change, move, or reassign them at the end of the year. Both positive and negative comments and complaints are taken into account, as well as the overall performance. In this case, the barrage of unsubstantiated, erroneous, and at sometimes mean-spirited allegations of our administration and trustees have been unnecessary and have basically derailed the education of our students for almost three weeks. This is strictly a confidential personnel matter that has grown into a public media distraction of our mission to provide the best possible education for all of our 8,900 students. It's time to move on to support the assignments of the superintendent and allow him to do the job he was appointed to do in the best interest of the children. The healing needs to begin now. If we don't, there will be further pandemonium discontent and collateral damage. Together, our nation will embrace all the new assignments, welcome the new principals, and give them the support they deserve. The superintendent must be able to pick his team. Tying his hands together and expecting him to complete the district goals will be encumbrant, if not impossible. This is not a firing, and no one has lost their jobs. Being a teacher is an honorable occupation, and we are all very proud of our profession. This has been painful for all of us. Based on the thorough examination of facts and judgment and the available information, I believe strongly about the motion. So I'm making a motion to, I move to accept the recommendations of the superintendent on reassignment on consent items C1 and 2.
Do I get a second? Let me check that, Wilson. What are we going to give this one? Make staff recommendation?
A recommendation.
Let's start, second.
What my move was, I move to accept the recommendations of the superintendent on reassignment on consent items C1 and 2, taking into consideration.
Yeah, but you want to know when the recommendation?
No. Where are we going to get a staff recommendation on number two? It's just to be determined.
Yeah, it was to be determined. It's going to be, at this moment, Loma Beach, that's sixth grade. However, Mr. Green, can you choose another position that is available? Is that correct?
She can apply for transfer, yes. I'm not on a good location.
So if sixth grade, Loma Beach.
So I move that we accept the staff's recommendation on item 2.
Would you like to amend the motion? Is that what you're asking? Okay, I'll amend the motion to take it separately on item C2 to approve the staff recommendations. Is that interesting?
Do you have a second?
Second.
So second, by Mr. Kim. Any comments, any, my board members?
I would like to make a comment, yes, you're right. I don't know how the other people are going to vote, but I've listened to the parents and teachers, and I've heard concerns about the principals being a team player. Well, I think the principal, the teacher, the parents at schools need to be team players. They need to be on the same base, they need to be working for the kids. And each and every school is different. And to be a team player is to be a team player for that school, not for the district, as far as I'm concerned. So I can't support, can't support that myself. I think our principals should be, we should have a policy of keeping our principals at their schools for a minimum of five years for education and research. They've gone to the district. So when it's all done, I'm hoping that it can have such a policy.
Any other board members? Okay, call for the vote. That's a vote call, correct. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those again.
Nay.
Nay. There's three to, three to two, so that's motion consecutive.
So I will make the next motion, which was two parts to that motion. Make the motion for C1. I move to accept the recommendations of the superintendent on reassignment on consent item C1.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So second, by Mr. Kim, move by this one. Discussion. Who is on? Yes, sir. Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay?
Nay.
No, two nay, three and two, it passes. Okay, next item, please.
I'd like to make the recommendation on items C3 and 4 to accept the recommendations of the superintendent on reassignment.
Second?
Second.
So second, by Mr. Kim. And move by this one. Any discussion? Say none. Call for the vote. All those in favor, say yes.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, say no.
Nay.
Three, two. It passes. Next item, please.
The next item would be items 6 through 12. Approve the recommendations of the superintendent on C5.
Okay, do I get a second on that? Second. Second, move second to the end by Mr. Kim. Move by this one. Any discussion? Say none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I get four?
I will, since we need people. Yes, the first two, we really love these people, we love them, so.
Yeah, that's four, is those nays?
Nay.
Nay, four to one, it passes. Next item, please. That would be, okay.
Next item would be to approve number 5 on consent with the contractors with A through, A through C minus E. All of them except for E.
Like C. I would call for a separate vote on each one?
Yeah.
Okay. You?
Okay, the first one on?
Number eight?
Number eight, 5A.
5A. Do I hear a motion?
I move to accept the recommendation.
So a move? Do you have a second, Kim? Any discussion? Say none. Call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There are four ayes. Any names? Oh, 5-0, excuse me.
The next one is item 5B. B, E. Ho, Del Sol, I move the recommendation.
Do I get a second? Second. I'll second that one. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three, two. Nay?
Nay.
Three, two, passes, three, two. Okay, the other one is 5C. This is Royal King's.
Item 5C is the Royal King's Academy. I move approval. I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm sorry, I, I.
To me, that's okay, I understand.
I move, I'm sorry.
I get nervous too.
I use 5.
5C.
5C. I move to accept the recommendation.
The motion on the table? Do you have a second? I second that. Okay. Call for the motion, I mean, call for the discussion? Say none. All those in favor, the vote?
Aye.
Aye. There's three ayes, and any nays?
Nay.
Two nays.
Three more goes. 5.
D? 5D as a door.
5D. I move to accept the recommendation.
Do I get a second on that?
5D.
5D, I second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Three, right here, yes. Three yeses, and how many else?
Two.
F and G, F is the, 5F. Okay, G. All of the perfect, three and eight, the fund. The school, the behavior, the people, okay, partnership.
I move the recommendation.
There's a move, a motion. Do you second on that?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Kim, move. Okay, any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to say that I go on for these because I think it's too late for this year to ease it, but that discussion should be held right away. I think for $60,000 to be spent on this sort of item, I think it's too late in the year to change it right now, you know, summer, stuff like that. But I think for next year, I think that should be really extravagant.
5G. I have motion, a second. Discussion, okay. Call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nay. Four ayes, one nay. Do I get it correct?
Yes.
So close? Action items?
I motion to approve. Motion to what? To approve resolution 2013/14-36. 2013/14-37, and 2013/14-40, retiree appreciation.
Second, okay. There's a second, there's a motion, a second. Please draw a call. Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Barr? Mr. Kim?
Aye.
Mr. Huckman?
Yes.
Mr. Laris?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a point of order here. Board bylaws, regular board meetings will be adjourned at 10:30 unless extended to a time certain by the, certain time, that's what time, certain by a majority of the board, the meeting shall be extended no more than once and may be adjourned to a later date.
Uh-oh. You got five minutes?
No, you did 11, you're 25 minutes over. So I don't, my understanding of this by your bylaws and stuff, you need to continue enough time.
Your bylaws can be waived by the board, so basically this is a guideline for the board. If you want to keep going, you can, you just need to take action to keep going. You can waive your own bylaws.
Oh. I'm Satrina, what's here? Doesn't say anything about waiving. Doesn't say anything about waiving here. Maybe I'll say what can be waived.
I'm not getting emotional to continue until finished. Fifteen minutes. Yeah. Do I get a, we motion to finish. Do I get a second? I'll put fifteen minutes on. The motion and a second to the record, you have that?
Should we have motion, do you have to waive your bylaws?
93, 23, to extend the meeting until we finish or give it some time. Let's say midnight.
The second, the motion, the second on the floor. Thank you. There's discussion on this? Say none. All those in favor? You can have 5-0.
This is a national forum on youth violence, school climate, and.
Superintendent, trustee, and administrators, audience. I bring before you a revised version of the commitments of agreement for the district and for the school sites. I met with Carol, I'm just tired of Carol, I can't remember her last name. And we made some changes, including we removed two full-time district coaches. We excluded any mention of PBIS, established evaluations. Said that pupil personnel, special ed staff is not responsible for training on function-based behavior support. Established a maximum of two hours per month for meetings, and a few other items. And so now, we bring this to you after having met and had some good discussion for your approval so we can apply for this grant from the Department of Justice.
National item goes. Motion to approve National Forum on Youth Violence, School Climate, and Trans. Transferation Grant.
Do you have a second to that motion? Any, if they can, any? Questions? I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five yeses on that one. The resolution 2013/14-38, inter-fund transfer. Yes, sir.
Mr. President and the board, Dr. Lusa, if I may, I'll speak loud enough from here to save a few seconds running over there and back. We chose not to borrow a tran this year to save the interest. We knew we would be very, very close on managing our funds to make payroll at the end of the year. We believe we're still going to do that, but that depends on a couple of receivables. So approval of this resolution will allow us to borrow internally from another fund that has money in it, the OCAP fund, and then transfer it back when we receive the funds from the state that are due us. They're going to pay some in June, we're not quite sure how much. And then in early July, we're going to get all of the referral they voted for the last few years. So I would hardly recommend approval.
Recommendation on table, any questions? Do you get a motion for this item?
I move approval of resolution 2013/14-38, inter-fund transfer.
Second. Do I get one second?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Barr? Yes. Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Huckman?
Yes.
Mr. Laris?
Yes.
Next items are informational as well as discussion items.
Professor, as I mentioned, we have a discussion in the opening. Can you Google, drive it?
Well, hi there. We just found out we have a technical delay, so even we'll be with it. I know, no. Okay, well, I'm here to try to make a really, really dense topic, a very complicated document. Quick, simple indeed. And I'm going to start out by telling you that the LCAP truly is everybody's work. It is our program staff that have worked on it. It's been the business office, it's such amended work on it, and also our school community, our teachers, our parents. And it is all about our students. In May, we had 8,941 students. And that LCAP concentration and supplemental funding, which is estimated to be 8.3 million this year, it's, the 85% of our students in our district, 85%, are either English learners homeless, excuse me, English learners low income or foster youth. That's a tremendous number. Because of that number, it allows us to do many district-wide initiatives. Instead of just, before it used to be at school sites, EIA money was just for English learners. So now we can go district-wide and then send money to sites. But another interesting little statistic that came out last week, last Friday, was that as of now, we have 2,875 homeless students that qualify for homeless. And that's 32% of our students. They, they, I'm not, they don't all live in cars, and they certainly aren't living on the street, but they live in garages, they live in closets, and they live with three or four families in a home. And that's what this 8.3 million is all about. It's about making sure that we give these kids the services that they need. So, Ilda's going to talk a little bit about creating the LCAP.
Well, good evening. President Garcia, Dr. Huelalusan, we're members, cabinet members, and audience. My name is Ida Huerta, and I'm going to speak to you in regards of how do we create the LCAP, or how we created the LCAP. First of all, the aid services team, we analyzed the data. We looked at the CST, which is the California Safe Standard, the CEL test. We also looked at suspension attendance rates, and also we looked at the, we analyzed the California Healthy Kids Survey. Also, we teamed up with the California Endowment, which they held their first community input meeting at Los Padres School, but we, the district, did not organize that event. It was the California Endowment, which we partnered with them. We helped them with the facilities, but they also with the announcements for that particular meeting. Principals have had informational meetings at their school sites with their own staff, at staff meetings with parents, with different, they have different parent meetings at their school site council, with the PTOs, the PTA, or the PTAs, or the Capacitos are informal meetings as well. Also, our big community input here for Salinas City, we had it at Harnell College. That was on February 22nd. We had, they had different parent meetings at their school site council, with the PTOs, the PTA, or the PTAs, or the Capacitos are informal meetings as well. Also, our big community input here for Salinas City, we had it at Harnell College. That was on February 22nd. We had approximately 182 people attended, which included parents, staff, talking about certificated and as well as classified. We also had different community members from the Salinas area, Monterey, different community advocates that attended that meeting. So how did we, from that community, community meeting at Harnell College, the way we designed it, our superintendent, Dr. Lusa, and Mary Pritchard, and Lori, presented to a general meeting that we had outline a breakup session. And at this breakup session, we had trained approximately 10 parents from our school, from our district, to facilitate, to help us facilitate with some of those meetings. So parents and community members and all the different stakeholders had the opportunity to give input. Immediately after that, we opened up our stakeholder survey, which was online. It was an online survey as well. We had a card, paper, a paper survey at the different offices of the different school sites, and also here at the district office. So many stakeholders had the opportunity to give input. We also collaborated with our, with MCOE, our management team, to help us create or give us guidance to develop our goals. Also, we received input from classified and certificated union executive boards, the negotiation team. And on May 7th, we had the LCAP review with the parent advisory and the district English learning advisory committee. That's required, that's mandated by the state to take their input for those two specific groups, which the parent advisory committee, those were parents elected by school sites. So school sites representatives came, the schools represent, sent the parents. That's the pact, the parent advisory committee. And also the T-LAC representatives are also voted by their school, like school parents. Okay, and on June 2nd, the LCAP, with the second LCAP draft was posted online. So on the survey, we had five guiding questions. We took the five guiding questions, which are, how can Salinas City Elementary School District help our students attend more regularly? How can Salinas City help our students do well in their classes? How can Salinas City help students feel safe and connected to their schools? How can Salinas City help more parents participate and become involved or engage in our schools? Question number five, how can Salinas City increase student engagement and motivation? We took those questions, MCOE provided a backup question to survey the different stakeholders, so we got those questions from MCOE. And there are eight state priorities, which all districts must, have annual goals within the eight state priorities, and since it's not up, I'm going to read the eight state priorities. Basic, I can't read this, it's, I'm going to get my little. Basic services, priority number two, implementation of academic content. Priority number three, parental involvement. Priority number four, pupil achievement. Priority number five, pupil engagement. Priority six, school climate. Priority number seven, draft course of study. And priority number eight is other student outcomes, which is just the county. They are, take that. That's applicable only to the county office, priority number eight. So let me talk. So let me talk a little bit about the stakeholder input. So for priority number one, which is basic services, twelve percent indicated that basic services, such as appropriate teacher assignments, sufficient instructional materials, core curriculum, hours of employment, technology, that was the, the comment under priority number one. Let me just back up a little bit, we, we group our comments around the eight priorities, we had approximately, there were, not approximately, there were a thousand seventy-one discrete comments, including multiple themes by one person, one person could have commented on priority number one, a priority number three, number six, and so forth, and so forth. So on priority number two, thirteen percent, people voted on access to comment, that's priority number two, that's implementation of academic content, professional development, Common Core State Standards, bilingual programs, library materials, twenty-first century learning. On priority number three, oh, it's already, good, on priority number three, twenty-five percent, which is parental involvement, the comments that stakeholders provided us were English, more English classes, behavior interventions at the school site, how to help students at school with different educational workshops and activities. For priority number four, pupil achievement, recognition to students and motivation for students, how to motivate students to continue coming to school, to keep up in school, and to do well in school. On priority number five, it's pupil engagement, and that's priority number five, that's sixty-nine percent of, of people voted on that, excuse me, six percent, six percent. So that's attendance rate, climate, absenteeism, and motivation. Priority number six, school climate, and that's twenty percent. That, of course, stakeholders wanted to decrease suspension rates, expulsion rates, wanted students to be more safe, and they wanted students to have more connected, connectedness to schools. Priority number seven, eighteen percent, broad course of study, that's support for struggling learners, after-school programs, intercessions, instruct, more instructional aids to support interventions, visual and performance arts was really big, and sports in the schools. And priority number eight, it's not applicable to, to the district, it's only applicable to the county office of education. So that's the LCAP stakeholder input, and...
Okay, very quickly, so we took all this information, and we tried to synthesize it and break it into three broad categories, which we did with our overarching goal. And there is one in the area of academic achievement, and since we are a elementary district, it says that every student will be academic expectation to successfully transition in middle school. For goal two, culture and climate, schools will provide a positive, safe, and well-maintained learning environment. Number three, care of community, schools will promote deep and develop, will promote and develop positive relationships with all members of the school community.
Good evening, my name is Mary Precher, I'm the director of Bioinflight for Migrant and Early Childhood Education. And as Ms. Sanders said earlier, the district received an additional eight point three, anticipated eight point three million dollars for the upcoming fourteen, fifteen school year, based on our district demographics and the percentage of English learners, students that counted either as an English learner, a low-income student, or foster youth, which totals approximately eight point three million. We have, in the LCAP, laid out actions and services that will support students district-wide to approximately four million dollars, and then the additional four point three million will be targeted specifically to support our English learners, our students of low income or foster youth, which we'll outline those later, but if you're looking at the LCAP document itself, it's divided into three sections, section one was the stakeholder in the process that Mrs. Huerta spoke about, section two specifically deals with the goals, and section three deals with the action and services. So the actions and services for all students would be found in section three A of the plan, and the actions and services specifically targeting English learners, low-income students, and foster youth would be found in section three B of the plan.
Okay, Monica? So the main question you have to ask in section two, when you're talking, developing, sort of fleshing out your goals, is what will be different and improved for the students? And so for our first goal on academic achievement, we came up with five subgoals, pretty much, that this is what, we needed to make sure that this happened for our kids. Then, after we did this, we went on, Monica, and came up with actions and services for all students in the district, using base, and then supplemental and concentration. Part of it is class size adjustment. We have a little under a million dollars for additional teachers next year. And then we get to multi-tiered systems of support, and that's RTI, that's the primary intervention where we have, are proposing to double the instructional aids in our schools, to go from one hour of library time to three hours to get wide reading. We also, because you're going back to the RTI, have kindergarten, the one-on-one individual learning folder, and third grade intervention using system forty-four at all schools. And then in fifth, fourth, fifth, and sixth, using the gateway intervention program. For twenty-first century skills, of course, that's Common Core implementation, lots of professional development and investment in our technology. It also includes investing in the personnel to maintain our technology. And we do have a proposal for three additional electronic technicians that will be on school sites every day to make sure that the machines are updated, maintained, cleaned, and seen to, so the teachers don't have to deal with that. And also, making sure that we are able to expand dual immersion per the parent request we receive. One of the issues that also did come up with goal one, with parents wanting to make sure that students had access to school curriculum, specifically lots of comments about the visual and performing arts. This is not just a Salinas City preference, being, well, the state of California is getting new visual and performing arts Common Core standards, and our county office will be leading an initiative in this, and we will be working with them as they roll it out to develop our own plan. We are continuing with the music teacher and funding too for next year.
Can I ask, can I ask you, maybe you speed it up a little bit, we still have a presentation before...
We have budget too. Okay, so then Mary has some for our English learners.
Just very quickly, when we're talking about part of the four point three million specifically targeting English learners, proposing additional professional development for teachers, continuing with the GLAD, as well as continuing to implement the master plan to require it by law, which encompasses the testing and progress monitoring of all English learners. We are also are proposing the use of Imagine Learning for English learners in first and second grade, as well as we have currently one program designated the Language Development Center, which is a newcomer program, we'll be expanding that to two classrooms. And the other item that comes under the pre-kinder learning opportunities, currently there's parent fees associated with our state preschool program, that has been a barrier for participation, so there's a portion of funds to eliminate that fee to parents. And I don't know if I just spoke, but for the first time in several years, the district will be offering a summer program to a wider group of students, specifically English learners, low-income, and foster youth.
So for the next one, with climate and culture, this is what's new and different and improved, but the, some of the actions that we're proposing to fund next week, is we do need to have at a district level, someone who is coordinating the various efforts and articulating them, and the implementation of PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. This is a requirement for the grant, and we have, it's really up and running at some of these sites, it's totally necessary. So we will have that at all of our sites, along with restored adjustments, with a program manager at the sites. We are proposing vice principals next year, depending on the size of the school, the enrollment, the district will be out of base on doing twenty-five percent at each site, and then for the smaller schools, an additional eight percent with supplemental and concentration or twenty-five percent. And this will be their role, is to, they are working with discipline, but it's again to emphasize the positives and put those structures in place. One of the other programs we're putting in is a program, a nonprofit group called Playworks comes in, and trains your new staff, and we're putting up new houses, to do recreational activities, conflict resolution with kids on the playground, to help minimize a lot of those things that carry back into classrooms.
Goal two, as we talked about, we've had some funds designated for counseling services to support students over the last several years. We are proposing an additional increase in fund allocation for counseling, that's something we've heard from both staff and definitely heard from parents, that there's a need for that. We also are proposing to fund part of our family, our district family resource center, which serves our district, the families experiencing homelessness, and we also have additional site administration support, which would support sites with very high concentration of English learners, low-income, and foster youth.
Okay, if I may, please say. We need to comply with the information item with state, and we have the budget for the next eight items, and we will be needing, again, we'll be union, I'll go slower with any questions that we may have. Okay? Thank you very much for the information, it's also the, we, but it's, but we will follow up. Yeah, yeah. Yes, sir. Are we running up against time here, or can we do this at another time?
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, it's not morning yet, we'll be very quick, and we'll do some follow-on workshops. This is an information briefing, it's on the LCAP budget and the budget for 2014, 15, and projections for two out-years. We've met the legal requirement by having the hearing, the public comment period earlier, and we have provided the information in all of the packets, including the full budget that weighs a few pounds. Before I go any further, I want everyone before they fall asleep to thank Lona, she spent well over a hundred hours...
Woo!
Fantastic job, so I will do my slides quickly so she can talk to some numbers. Next slide, please. You notice the one buzzword or the buzz phrase on slide one was fund follows function, and that's what the LCAP does, it gives us the functions, and the LCFF, the Local Control Funding Formula, then provides dollars to those functions. The history is, we used to have a revenue limit, that's now kind of the base grant.